The Columbus City Council meeting for November 16th, 2020 will now come to order. We, in compliance with the Open Meeting Act, revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this meet, it's posted in the back of the room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Buckley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte. Barr.
Here.
Keimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Creisha.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Buckley, the roll call has been called.
Thank you. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
(Music) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? O'er the broad stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watch were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during the proceedings, anyone in our audience would like to address anything on the agenda, ask that you please come forward, give your name and address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Item four, four A, minutes of Novem-- oh, excuse me. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Four A, minutes of the November 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. Four B, minutes of November 2nd, 2020 Community Development Agency meeting. Four C, resolution number R-20-118, authorizing the mayor to sign the year-end certification of street superintendent for State of Nebraska Department of Transportation. Four D, resolution number R-20-119, approving request to Nebraska Department of Economic Development to extend completion date of the 15th Street Reconstruction Project to November 8th, 2021 regarding Community Development Block Grant Project Number 16-CD-101. Four E, resolution number R-20-120, approving lease to hangar aircraft with Yellow Airplane LLC for hangar number 1412-S. The Board of Airport Commissioners recommends approval. Item four F, resolution number R-20-121, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Four G, Finance Department reports. Four H, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you'd like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda being routine in nature be approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Brings us up to special presentations. We have a proclamation this evening.
Six A, proclamation declaring Saturday, November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday.
Whereas the government of Columbus, Nebraska celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 62% of the U.S. small businesses report that they need to see customer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of U.S. small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And three-quarters of the United States consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently-owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact, and 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently-owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas Columbus, Nebraska supports our local businesses, it creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our community. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, James B. Buckley, the mayor of the City of Columbus, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year. Okay, we'll move on to Report of Council Committees.
Ten A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee, November 9th, 2020. Ten A-1, July through September 2020 Quarterly Report of the Traffic Control Device Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Oh, I got it.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Okay.
(Audio loss).
Okay, then you should try to be on this one. Um, and then I need to read that, but I didn't.
Here we go.
Read that.
You're on 10A.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go. Well, yeah, she's got to go back to 10A.
You've got to go back to where you were. There you go.
There you go. There we are.
Sorry.
There we are. Motion passes.
We're in training.
Yep, fine, no problem. We'll go to 10B.
10B, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee, November 10th, 2020. Ten B-1, Golf Professionals Contract. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and council that the one-year golf professional contract be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
10B.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Okay.
Motion passes. Brings us up to New Business.
Thirteen A, Appointment of William G. Contreras as Police Officer.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the name of William G. Contreras for appointment as a police officer, subject to successful completion of all tests and training. The Civil Service Commission certified this candidate at their September 28th, 2020 Civil Service Commission meeting. Per the council rules, a two-week waiting period for the appointment of a police officer is waived. William Contreras is a native of Fremont, Nebraska, received his GED certificate from Bellevue Public Schools, and is bilingual. William is currently employed with the Dodge County Detention Facility, where he has worked as a corrections officer for the past year. Prior to this position, he worked at Fremont Health, Children's Hospital, Nebraska Furniture Mart, as a security guard. Mr. Contreras will attend the Columbus Police Department's field training course, and this is a budgeted position. Council members, I need a motion and a second.
Mr. Council President, I move for the appointment of William Contreras as a police officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Mr. Contreras is here in the audience with us. We'd like you to introduce yourself and let us thank you for your, for coming forward to serve with us.
Go ahead, take your mask off. Okay. My name's William Contreras. I was born in Los Angeles, California. Moved out here at 15 years old, my parents, for, you know, better life due to Los Angeles being, you know, very crime-ridden and expensive. We moved to Bellevue. I didn't like school, you know, growing up. Not gonna lie. But eventually, I knew I had to get my act together, got my GED, started working as a security officer to eventually work my way up to become a police officer. I know security would not give me all the way, so I took a pay cut to become a corrections officer to help improve my chances, and I visited the city. It's growing very fast compared to Fremont. I think you guys are very advanced. I've seen myself living here for a long time, and hopefully you guys give me the opportunity to become a police officer.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Good luck in training.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we, thirteen B.
Thirteen B, Application of Ferguson Properties, Inc., for preliminary plat of Park Place 9th Edition, 33rd Street and 45th Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the preliminary plat for Park Place 9th Edition be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this preliminary plat. Any discussion?
10B.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Okay.
Motion passes. Brings us up to New Business.
Thirteen A, Appointment of William G. Contreras as Police Officer.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor wishes to submit the name of William G. Contreras for appointment as a police officer, subject to successful completion of all tests and training. The Civil Service Commission certified this candidate at their September 28th, 2020 Civil Service Commission meeting. Per the council rules, a two-week waiting period for the appointment of a police officer is waived. William Contreras is a native of Fremont, Nebraska, received his GED certificate from Bellevue Public Schools, and is bilingual. William is currently employed with the Dodge County Detention Facility, where he has worked as a corrections officer for the past year. Prior to this position, he worked at Fremont Health, Children's Hospital, Nebraska Furniture Mart, as a security guard. Mr. Contreras will attend the Columbus Police Department's field training course, and this is a budgeted position. Council members, I need a motion and a second.
Mr. Council President, I move for the appointment of William Contreras as a police officer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Mr. Contreras is here in the audience with us. We'd like you to introduce yourself and let us thank you for your, for coming forward to serve with us.
Go ahead, take your mask off. Okay. My name's William Contreras. I was born in Los Angeles, California. Moved out here at 15 years old, my parents, for, you know, better life due to Los Angeles being, you know, very crime-ridden and expensive. We moved to Bellevue. I didn't like school, you know, growing up. Not gonna lie. But eventually, I knew I had to get my act together, got my GED, started working as a security officer to eventually work my way up to become a police officer. I know security would not give me all the way, so I took a pay cut to become a corrections officer to help improve my chances, and I visited the city. It's growing very fast compared to Fremont. I think you guys are very advanced. I've seen myself living here for a long time, and hopefully you guys give me the opportunity to become a police officer.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Good luck in training.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we, thirteen B.
Thirteen B, Application of Ferguson Properties, Inc., for preliminary plat of Park Place 9th Edition, 33rd Street and 45th Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move the preliminary plat for Park Place 9th Edition be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this preliminary plat. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
There you go.
Motion passes.
Thirteen C, Quote from Commonwealth Electric Company of the Midwest in the amount of $15,661 for traffic signal preemption installation for fire department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Commonwealth Electric Company of Mid, of the Midwest for traffic signal preemption installation be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
There you go.
Thirteen C, Quote from Commonwealth Electric Company of the Midwest in the amount of $15,661 for traffic signal preemption installation for fire department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Commonwealth Electric Company of Mid, of the Midwest for traffic signal preemption installation be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What is, what is signal traffic preemption?
It's being able to change the light as the fire truck's getting ready to go down the road.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a layman's term. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The preempt.
All right. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Thirteen D, Comments from Mayor and City Council Members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion can be held on this item.
Any comments from council members? I have a couple, if no one else has anything to say. I'd like to start with, well, thanking the public for getting out and voting during our last election. Welcome back our councilmen that were up for reelection, that were contested. Mr. Schilling, Mr. Lor.
Thank you.
And again, I thank the public for doing their civic duty and, and moving our country forward, I hope. There, there is something else I wanted to mention this evening. We have a process going on, the chamber's involved, with a program called In Vision Columbus. It's a group of, of young, dynamic individuals that are trying to take a look at where our community needs to go and what, what are some of the things we, we need to be thinking about here today so that we're positioning ourselves to be there in 10 years or 15 years? Things that are probably not things I will take advantage of, but things that we want our public to take advantage of so that our city grows and grows in a way that, that brings people to Columbus. There's a survey out right now, and, and I've been asked to, to ask people to get online and take the survey, whether you be a business person, because the survey is geared both toward the businesses, and it's geared toward just the individual members of our community. You can get more information by getting, going online at www dot thecolumbuspage dot com, and you can find the information there for the survey. I, I think it's really important that people look into this and try to give us your, your thoughts. We're after your feed, your feedback. So often, we hear, "Well, why did you do that?" Nobody asks me. Here's your chance. You're being asked. So maybe speak up and tell us what you think. Finally, I, I would like to just, I'd like to ask the public to step forward and, and do as good a job as possible as we continue to battle this COVID situation that we're in. You know, you hear the word COVID fatigue, you hear the words, you know, "It's going to be done." Hey, I remember, I, I had more than one person tell me this was over after the election. Guess what? It's not over. It's not over. It's still here, and it's getting worse.
Neither is the election.
You know? Good point. I'll guarantee you, one of, one will be over before the other. I think we just want, you know, there's, we, we can, we can say we're blue, we can say we're red. You know, my personal opinion is we let politics get in the way of this whole situation way too early. We need to look at this for what it is. There's things we can do to help, and we need all of us to try to step up and do the most, the best we can in that regard. If it's mask-wearing, if it's distancing, hand washing, whatever it happens to be. This is real. You know, what I've told people is, hey, when this started in March and April, it was, "Yeah, somebody's getting sick, they're gonna be okay." Everyone in this room knows somebody that's been affected by it. Today, every one of us knows somebody that's had it or is recovering from it or is in some way affected by it. So let's accept the fact that there's things we can do. Let's step up and do those things and try to make our neighbors and our community safer for all of us. All right, we'll move on to whatever's next on the agenda.
Resolutions.
Fourteen, resolutions.
Fourteen A, Resolution Number R-20-122, approving extension of agreement with Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of University of Nebraska Medical Center for Forensic and Crime Lab Testing Services.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R-20-122 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R-20-122. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Fourteen B, Resolution Number R-20-123, approving memorandum of understanding with Lower Loop Natural Resources District regarding Columbus Recharge Project and city easements in the southeast drainage improvement area.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R-20-123 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R-20-123. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Fourteen C, Resolution Number R-20-124, approving agreement with Bond Rensel, Bannon Storage, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $68,300 for temporary relocation of library to former police department facility.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution Number R-20-124.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R-20-124. Any discussion?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I assume somewhere down the line, these books are going to have to go back to the new library. Is it going to be a similar number? Because this just moves them one way.
Karen's here. So Karen, would you please come forward?
She's hiding behind the post back there from my angle. So I don't believe that it would be as much going back, because we'll be going back to existing shelving. This number includes moving some of the shelving to this building to house the, the books, so it should be less the next time we move.
And they were the only bid that we got?
We got three. And we did a request for qualifications. We got three submissions, and we, through the standard process, selected Bond Rensel. The other two gave us numbers, although that was not required, and this happens to be the lowest bid as well, so, most qualified and lowest bid.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing none, we have a motion and a second.
All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen D, Resolution Number R-20-125, approving agreement with BVH Architecture in the amount of $2,435,234 for design and construction phase services for the new combined library, children's museum, and city hall community building.
Mr. Mayor, I move Resolution Number R-20-125 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R-20-125. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, did we have any other bids from other companies on this amount of money?
Yes, we did, and, and I, I think it's important to note that I think in some of your information, it references this amount that also goes against the $9 million budgeted amount. Recognize, that's only the expenditure that happens in this fiscal year. So this is the amount that is the expenditure toward the whole $30 million project, or so to speak. Tara, if you wanted to say anything above and beyond that, please correct me or add to it.
No, you're correct, and the only thing to answer Dennis's question, we did a request for qualifications for, for this architect, and we had nine proposals. We did interviews of four companies, and we did that several months ago, and we've been working with BVH ahead of this contract and ahead of the vote to make sure we were prepared to bring this contract forward as soon as possible after the vote.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. We have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. I would say before we move on, because Tara Vasatchek, our city administrator, had commented on that last discussion, there has been a, a ruling by the governor that allows this to happen in real time because of COVID. And so you, as a public, will probably see more of what is happening tonight as we move forward in the future, where some elected officials and staff will be calling in because they're quarantined, or they're sick, or what have you, they are able to continue to take place and participate in the meeting. For those of you, we have our city administrator on the line, and we also have our city engineer on the line. So again, I just thought it was good to, I should have explained that right in the very beginning. I didn't. Our attorney's not waving his tie at me, so I was okay in just explaining it the way I did. All right, we now go to fourteen E.
Fourteen E, Resolution Number R-20-126, Terminating Memorandum of Understanding with Community Internet Systems, Inc., Megavision for occupancy in the library.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend Resolution Number R-20-126 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R-20-126. Any discussion? Before we vote on this, I would like to say the council received a, a nice letter from Mr. Schumacher, the, the main gentleman with Megavision, recognizing our desire to move forward. I, I personally, and I think the council as a whole, and the citizens of Columbus, want to thank Megavision for the services they've offered us over all the years, and we appreciated that very, very much. This is a new chapter we're, we're seeing, and we're moving forward with, with what we're doing now with our community center, and I, I just, I thought it was, I thought it was gracious of, of Mr. Schumacher to send us the letter and, and say it was, he understood where we were moving forward from, and I'm not going to say he was happy, but he understood. So I think with that, we have a motion and a second. Any, everybody in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Move on to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, Ordinance Number 20-24, approving purchase agreement with Jackson Services, Inc., in the amount of $110,554 for a purchase of current city-owned impound lot located on 10th Street and 30th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and Ordinance Number 20-24 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Ordinance Number 20-24. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Ordinance Number 20-24.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 20-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance Number 20-24. Any discussion? I would just say for the public that's looking at this and wondering about it, if this is the piece of ground where our impound lot had been located, a fenced-in area to the east of Jackson Services on 10th Street. Jackson Services had, had expressed interest in this piece of property. It served, it was a good location for them, and it allowed us to make a move with our impound lot. You will see on what's coming up on the agenda items that will be part of the new impound lot that we're making to replace this. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify, oh, have we do that?
No, we didn't.
All, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item fifteen A-1, Quote from No Sweat Fencing Index in the amount of $36,192 for fencing for new impound lot located at South 14th Avenue west of the wastewater treatment facility.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the Quote from No Sweat Fence Index for fencing be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Quote for fencing. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
This is in the low area, right where the old transfer station is, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And will that transfer station be taken down?
I, it is part of the plan, but I don't.
It won't be done?
No.
Before this?
It won't be done before this. But it is part of the long-term plan.
Thank you.
Any others? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item fifteen A-2, Quote from Capital City Electric in the amount of $39,362 for lighting for new impound lot located South 14th Avenue west of the wastewater treatment facility.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Quote from Capital City Electric be accepted.
Second.
I move that the Quote from Capital City Electric be accepted.
Second.
I move that the Quote from Capital City Electric be accepted.
Second.
I move that the Quote from Capital City Electric be accepted. Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Capital City Electric for lighting be accepted. Second?
Have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Capital City Lighting for the, or Capital City Electric for the lighting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to consideration of payroll and bills on file.
Eighteen A, A R L Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that I be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item and because I have a conflict of interest because I am the owner of A R L Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Councilmember Jablonski be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item and to suspend the city council rules requiring him to leave the council chambers during the discussion and vote on this agenda item.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move the bill from A R L Credit Services be approved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Take it up. Thank you very much.